Well, welcome. Tonight is the time when we discuss what's going in front of town meeting. For any of the citizens in Milford who don't know, every penny spent is approved by town meeting. No department head, no select board, nobody has the right to spend any money except town meeting. Now, once town meeting votes on it, then the department heads get their budgets and they go spend their money. But we're gonna go through surprisingly small warrant. Twenty-nine articles, but a hundred and forty-three million dollars. You know, we've joked over the years that when it started getting up there that for a hundred and forty-three million, you could have bought Milford when I grew up. They would have thrown in Hope Dale and Menden. And here we are on the biggest budget I can remember. But before we get started, let's start with introductions.
Sure. Hi, I'm Brent Hornberger from the Finance Committee. I'm serving as the Vice Chair right now.
Hi, I'm Mitch Russetti with the Finance Committee and glad to be here, Al.
And future Chair.
Oh, that's very flattering, but yeah.
Okay, so we've got twenty-nine articles. Number one. Brent, why don't you take this because you're gonna be giving half of our talk?
Well, number one is really, you know, kind of a procedural thing. So, you know, really what this is about is kind of kicking off the whole town meeting, isn't it? That's really, you know, and then it's, uh, hearing the reports from the town officers and committees is really the extent of it.
So we'll be giving our Finance Committee overall report. And then special section of it will be geriatric authority, which will come from you as sub-chair, subcommittee chair on geriatric. And then who knows, there'll be other reports, just different departments and groups that want to get in front of the town meeting. Article two. I mean, the first, what, five or six?
Yep.
Pretty straightforward. It is the compensation of salaried employees.
Yeah, so basically the, you know, personnel board goes through our salaried employees. There's position levels, salary levels that are recommended. Again, this is just more of a housekeeping. We're just approving ostensibly the salaries of these folks that we have working for the town.
Yeah, and the key here is most of these are non-union.
Correct.
So when we say salaried employees, police, fire, sewer, teachers, they all have union contracts. But we have a group of people who aren't covered and we want to make sure they're taken care of.
Yep.
And then obviously, and before I forget, it's going up about 2.9%. In the town meeting report, which will be up and available to everybody, any resident, well, anybody on the internet, actually, it's more than residents. The warrant comes out and then the FinCom prepares a report, which goes over every article in the warrant, telling you the background and some of the discussion held by the FinCom.
So, Al, I think we talked about the increase very briefly, but it's important to have, you know, cost of living increase at a high inflation environment right now. And, you know, we, we really don't want the, uh, the folks that are employed by the town to be, you know, high-quality, low-turnover, you know, employees of the town. And, you know, they, they make the town work in a lot of ways, you know? So I think it's important that we have it as a good working environment. And there's increases in this article and there's some other unionized articles, increases that we'll get to as we go through this. But it's important to retaining, you know, high-quality talent in town.
It's also important to note too that some of these positions, even though they're not union, are contractual. So there are employees under contract. Those contracts have been negotiated and presented as part of this too. So that also would account for a little bit of the increase as well.
Yeah, we'll talk about two or three of them tonight.
Yep.
Full-time elected officers. Article three.
Very similar article. We're approving the salaries of those folks. I don't remember the other 2.9 increase was there as well.
Yep, it's just, it usually follows the same. And then we run into number four.
Uh, yeah, so really, uh, number four is, is a big one. I mean, um, this, my understanding, uh, it just gives the town the authority to raise an appropriate sums of fund that the budget was, you know, the budget was developed. And this just gives the town the authority to raise those funds and spend those funds as such.
It's always funny when people come up and say, "Why is it that nobody ever argues over the budget or a town meeting?" It's like everything is always, the FinCom is always saying favorable, favorable. How do you get along with everybody? And you feel like laughing, saying, "You gotta come to the subcommittee meetings."
I have seen, I mean, it is interesting that you, you say that. I mean, I have seen in other communities, you know, people will stand up and they'll, they'll vote to approve this with a, a motion to amend. And they'll take out certain line items and they'll do interesting things. But really, if, I believe if, if this were to be voted against, we would just go into a kind of a 1/12 situation where it'd be based on last year's budget and that's how we would have to spend, so.
Yeah, that'd be horrible. And that's obviously, oh yeah, why the Finance Committee and all the subcommittees spend so much time with the department heads and go through all the details ahead of time and have those debates. Multiple meetings happen that kind of, you know, start at the, the local level with the subcommittee meetings and builds to the full FinCom review. So then by the time we get to town meeting, hopefully we've had all those debates already. And our recommendation helps avoid the scenario you're just describing.
Absolutely.
It's always fun to watch the dynamics, like with the school committee, where every year they'll come in and say, "We need a nine-billion-dollar increase." And the Finance Committee comes in pounding their chest, saying, "We're destitute, we're broke." Look at it, just say, "Okay, we over this?" "Yeah, we're over this. Now let's talk about what's real and what we can afford."
Yeah.
You know, and I always remember, I'll never forget, a few years ago when money really got tight, school committees around us were voting to defer their raises. And I never understood how, if I can't afford to pay even my mortgage now, how I'm gonna pay two times the mortgage, you know, two increases. Our union, and this is a union, came to us and said, "We will forego our raise if you tell us you'll put the money back into school and save our teachers." That was a heck of a statement. Caught me blindsided because I'd never heard of a union offering up raises to save their own employees.
Yeah, I mean, the truth of matter is too, that if you look at some of the communities around us, we are in a very good position. You know, municipal finance, as it, you know, comes to the raising costs of education is, is a challenge for a lot of communities. We are lucky to receive a lot of aid and have good folks to work with. So it's, we're in a very fortunate position.
Well, the new rules, the new policies in Beacon Hill finally came to Milford's aid. Because the No Student, you know, Student Act they put through said they need to target communities with three major issues. Low income, and as much as I hate to say it, over fifty percent of our high school kids come from families that qualify. And that's less than thirty-four thousand a year that they make. High special needs, and we do have that, and high ELL. So last year, we picked up seven million incremental dollars. I remember when the school committee first came and said they needed six million extra. My heart stopped because it's like, where are we gonna get that kind of money? And sure enough, the state came through last year and again, looks like this year. So Milford has been fortunate in that regard. And you'll see an article here where Milford's gonna help out some of the towns around us. Reoccurring articles come under number five.
Yeah, five is, you know, it's, it's really kind of lumping together a bunch of things. It does, in fact, make town meeting more efficient because I don't, I personally don't believe that you need to debate each one of these things. Things that, you know, one is to let the select board take charge in legal proceedings, you know, for the town, giving the treasurer the authority to do this job. Things that, uh, anybody's welcome, you know, to debate and to pull apart if we're into a town meeting. But as a practical matter, these are things that we just need to approve so we can just kind of like help town function.
Well, I love the one that allow the town to collect insurance money. So when somebody hits one of our poles and their insurance company pays to fix the pole.
Yep.
Well, they can't, remember, town meetings are the only ones that can take money in or put money out. So we have to give them permission to say, "Thank you for the money."
Yep.
Yeah, again, this is just Article five, just sums up pretty much the basic functions of government. And like Brent indicated, allows everyone to just vote on it as one fell swoop. Pretty standard boilerplate stuff.
Article six, peg access funds.
Uh, this is another one. If it was up to me, might be in the recurring one. But, uh, you know, because it does come up every year. And, you know, really, when you look at your cable bill, there's a whole bunch of line items on there. If you actually get a physical bill and look at, uh, some of us get it all electronically and don't see these details anymore. But when you were to look at the details, there is some money that gets aside for, uh, set aside for, you know, public TV, public access.
Franchise fee.
That's what it's under, the franchise fee. And, you know, really here, what we're, you know, really just kind of like authorizing the release of that money to the schools.
Yeah, there, two years ago, the state changed the law. It used to be we accepted the money from Verizon and Comcast and we decided we're gonna give a piece to the schools. It was just done. Now they changed the law and said, "No, you have to vote. Town meeting has to approve us giving that money that came to us expecting to go to the schools to the schools." So as you say, it's kind of a no-brainer, but we have to do it. I'm not sure if that can go into reoccurring. Then we should ask Brian Murray to find out if legally we can put that under there because it happens every year.
Happens every year and it's not contentious and it's, it's money to the schools. And, you know, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of opposition to that one or the next one as you look ahead.
Well, number seven, Chris Moran's favorite article. Affectionately known as the potato chip article.
Basically, this just allows the Milford School District to keep the money that is raised through its vending machines, is my understanding.
But there's a caveat. It must be spent for student activities.
Right.
Okay, it's not like you can't have a teacher's luncheon or something for the teachers. That money has to be spent on activities for the students. It's a wide range of what you can do. Now, here's one that needs explaining because most people don't understand. Article eight, the police collective bargaining. Half a million dollars, 525.
I guess the, the, so the basics of it, of course, are as advertised. I mean, so, you know, it's a, a negotiation of the, the agreement. And, you know, there's a retroactive component to it, meaning it goes back to July 1 of '21, which also means in the last few years, we haven't had any increases as we've been working on that, you know, negotiating the contract. So there's a retro component to it, so we do have to pay back on that part. But this is really about making sure that the Police Department in this case, you know, is compensated appropriately and fairly and is a desirable place for officers to work. And we want that in town.
And the thing to remember is that we budget zero percent increase. When we go into negotiations, years ago, we decided we're not gonna tell the negotiator that, "Hey, we got three percent to spend," or "We got four percent." So what we tell them is, "We have zero. Let the negotiators go at it."
Yep.
And then when they finally agree on a contract, you know, if it comes out 3.5%, then as Brent said, we have to retro-consider, you know, this has been two years. So you got a year of raise from last year plus half a year this year, more than half. It's May, it's almost, so that's why all of a sudden it's a half a million dollars. Number nine, for people who don't understand Passover. A motion to pass over is set so no action is taken on the article. Not negative, not positive, it's just no action taken. So we weren't sure if the Fire Department was gonna have their contract completed. So it turns out they didn't. So we'll pass over the article and if it's done, we'll deal with it just like we just did with the police.
Yep.
In the fall.
And that's also, it's the same, uh, really for Article 10. Instead of the fires, the library union, uh, that'll be the same issue. It's gonna be passed over for that.
But that's got a wrinkle to it. The library, it's interestingly enough, can cover their raise. It's being passed over because they don't need money. Sue Edmonds has enough money in her budget to do the retro.
Yep.
Without coming back to the town for more. So that's why, that's why that one's being passed over. That was concluded, agreed to, it's done. But they don't need any extra money. They can take it out of their existing budget. Number 11, relocation of Cedar Street.
So basically, um, this, this one could get a little bit confusing. And just to simplify it, um, I believe 11 and 12 are really related and they go together. So in conversations, we've talked about is, uh, there has been a low-impact business that wants to put a location off of this old, I guess, what we call a paper road now. It's, it's on paper, it exists, uh, it's gotta be changed. But over behind Wendy's is gonna be a storage facility unit, is I think the current plan. I'm not sure what stage of, you know, planning and the process that's gone through. But, um, what this will do is, originally, there had been something that was approved at town meeting to create some sort of road setup for a Goodyear tire facility that didn't come to fruition. These two articles, I believe, creates a private road that's gonna be maintained by the business owner that's going to allow for access and egress from that storage facility. I think that sums it up, right?
I mean, the good news is the access will be behind Wendy's to, I think, all the way almost to the mobile station behind there. The good news is new building, which means new taxes.
New commercial taxes.
And we don't have to maintain the road and all that.
Absolutely.
Because it's not an accepted Milford road. So seems like a win-win.
I think what also might be positive to mention, um, if we're gonna be talking about kind of the, some of the pros and cons and weighing the, the benefits of these articles is that the proposed building, this is going to be, everyone's always concerned about the traffic on Dilla and 85. This really is a low-impact traffic project, you know, think a storage facility. Somebody might be accessing their storage unit, you know, once a month, once a week, once every two weeks. You know, in my mind, this is even better than a tire facility because you're gonna have employees that are, you know, those roads are already pretty well-traveled and pretty well-used, so it seems like a pretty good bang for the buck for the town.
I think that's right. And there was a lot of discussion about access to the bike path as well. And it's, we've been assured that, you know, the access will be preserved. There's people that, um, kind of park in that space behind Wendy's and you can kind of cut back to the bike path. There's a trail that connects in there and they say that that'll be preserved or some, similar, something similar be preserved. So, um, there's no ask for money on this article, but it does bring business to town. So from the finance perspective, or Finance Committee perspective, you know, it's a good thing.
It's gonna be a big facility. Did I remember six hundred?
Lots of units.
Units?
Yeah.
That's a lot of units. Big building, big taxes, that's good. Okay, we roll into number 13. Rick Velani's gonna try and come up with an electricity program to save us all money.
Yeah, this, um, is actually kind of exciting. I know that the board had taken this up a while back. Basically, this is going to allow the board to continue to research, develop, and participate in, if possible, kind of an aggregate electricity program. Some of the surrounding communities, I think Oxbridge, for example, is, is part of an aggregate. And what this does is it, it pretty much brings the, the bargaining power of municipalities acting together that can negotiate better overall utility rates for their residents. It's important to note too that if this comes to fruition, residents can choose to opt in and choose to opt out. So it's something that I believe would be, you know, participant-based and be optional for folks if they, they like what they see. They can take advantage and if not, they certainly don't have to.
Yeah, it just seems like a great idea. I mean, to kind of, you know, bundle the purchasing power of the town together and give people the chance to join that. We've all seen electrical rates go a little crazy in the last, you know, year or so.
Really high.
So that, that could save people some, some real money.
A little crazy.
Well, I was trying to be friendly.
It's like Hiroshima was a minor inconvenience to the afternoon tea.
Well, uh, yeah. No, I mean, rates have gone up substantially and I know a lot of folks in town have been trying to play the game of switching providers and locking in for a year or so. But, um, this is a more tenable long-term solution and the board's being very proactive about it. So I think this is something that's gonna go over well at town meeting.
The thing I like is that you've got the town looking out for the terms. Sometimes when you jump in and jump out, all of a sudden, there's a hook there that you didn't know.
Yep.
And, you know, Rick's gonna make sure that he looks at every hook that's possibly there because if something happens, they know where he works. Finance Director Contract.
Oh, so yeah, Article 14 is, uh, it's an increase for Zach Taylor, our Finance Director. It's a, it's a cost of living adjustment. You know, for him, we've gone through a bunch of other, you know, other roles. This one is named specifically in this article. For people who don't know Zach Taylor, I would, you know, tell you as a member of the Finance Committee and a finance professional, you know, we're really lucky to have somebody like Zach who knows everything that's happening in town, has, you know, his ear to the ground for everything going on. He knows all the capital projects, he knows all the expenses, he knows all the budgets. He works with everybody day-to-day. There's a Finance Committee that we're members of, but we're volunteers that have day jobs mostly. You know, there's nobody who's a full-time professional doing this. So the town of this scale and a hundred-and-forty-million-dollar budget we talked about, it's a real good idea to have professionals and Zach's a great leader for the town.
He's knowledgeable, but it's his attitude.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? We've gone into him with some challenging situations. And it always seems to be can-do, will-do. He doesn't create obstacles and we've had that in the past.
Yeah, I mean, good financial, you know, leadership can make or break any community. And when you look at the work that he's done over the last, you know, during his tenure, he's put the town in a very, very good financial position at a multitude of levels. So this just kind of, you know, affirms our commitment to him and just represents a contract negotiation.
Fifteen, sewer project. Now, the transfer, if you read it, um, originally, it said two million dollars from stabilization. And people immediately started saying, "Women, I don't have sewer. Why are you taking two million dollars out of my stabilization, the town's stabilization account?"
Yeah, it's, I think it's actually a really great story because it's, it's out of the sewer stabilization. Which means they have their own fund and they've squirreled away their own stabilization. And instead of coming to the town to ask for money for this pumping station, they're doing it from their own fund and the money they've set aside, you know, over time to build this up and now they're using it to do a project, not doing any bonding, not asking for any money from the town. They're gonna take care of neighborhoods like Mr. Russetti's who is staying out of this one because it's your neighborhood.
Well, I actually, I have a septic, so I don't, uh, I'm not even gonna benefit from this. But as a rule of thumb, I just don't vote for things that are occurring on my street. So that's, uh, that's what it is. But yeah, a lot of people, you know, folks, this comes up a lot when it comes to water and sewer. And they do have to have their own operating, uh, you know, funds. They operate kind of as microenterprises and they serve, you know, the ratepayers, right? So, um, this is something that's coming from sewer ratepayers. It's gonna benefit the sewer ratepayers and it's not gonna have an impact, you know, like somebody like me who has a septic.
Right.
Not gonna be impacted at all.
And this was approved already last year. And the source of funding was to bond it. And Chris Pillar, our treasurer, again, a great guy, looking out for the town, came up and said, "Wait a minute, with the price of bonds going where they are, we're better off borrowing from ourselves and taking it out of the sewer stabilization account." Which, as you mentioned, is only, um, paid by people who have sewer. You and I, although I'd love sewer, uh, don't contribute at all because we're not ratepayers. So this is just a matter of how we fund the project. The project's already approved. Next one is a town-administered contract.
This is similar to the ones we've talked about. It's an increase for, uh, Rick Velani, the town minister, administrator. You know, it's a big enterprise that, you know, he, he helps captain the ship on an awful lot of projects. You know, obviously works closely with Zach Taylor, who we just talked about a couple minutes ago. So, you know, a cost of living increase, you know, for his role, I think, is warranted just like everybody else out there had, was looking for cost of living increases from, you know, from their employers.
Yeah, I think what's important to note, and we talked a little bit about Zach, when you look at, uh, you know, a lot of municipalities have kind of a revolving door of town administrators and, you know, you have three-year contracts. And if you're lucky as a town administrator, you might make it through two contracts. Milford's lucky in that it's been, we've had stable leadership for a long time. There's only been a few people that have been in that role. Rick's been a pretty steady hand in that for, for a long time now. So to have that kind of consistency amongst that position, uh, I think, you know, to take time to appreciate it, it is rare when you look at some of the surrounding communities. So it just goes to show, I think, too, that, um, we have a lot of the good, right people in the right leadership positions.
Article 17, bylaw.
This is the, this is the protecting the water supply. So it's a water protection, uh, it's an update to really the zoning map, you know? So this is actually really around looking at, you know, all the pumping wells and saying, "Okay, where does the groundwater come from that makes it to these wells?" And then make sure that we protect the land, you know, in those zones of contribution. So it's a zoning update to match where we, you know, where we believe the groundwater comes from. So you wanna make sure you're not causing, you know, pollution to your future water supply.
Yeah, I think too, it's important to note, and Al had noted this in his report, we really don't have a choice, um, you know, DEP.
No, it's not optional.
DEP is mandating this. There's really no financial impact in terms of the expenditure, but it is something that we're required to do.
And it sounded like when we asked, there was, if a business is already there, then they could be grandfathered in. So it's not like, you know, you change the zoning map and somebody's instantly in trouble. The answer was that, no, they could be grandfathered in if they're already in place.
Well, you've got somebody who's been living there forever, behaving, not affecting the water supply. Why change their lives? You know, why change the business or whatever?
Right.
You know? So at this point, like you say, it's not like we have a choice, but it's the right thing to do to protect our water supply. Tax title account. It's the only time I see tax that I like, I like spending money.
So, yeah, basically, um, this account, uh, tax title, the town treasurer is asking to raise these funds to be able to, whether it's like incur legal fees or when you have a situation with, you know, deed-in lieu of foreclosure or something like that, to help collect taxes overdue, non-paid taxes, or to, for example, take properties through the court system when the town takes possession of those before they get auctioned off. So, uh, the good news is, is when those properties do get auctioned off, you see them. Milford had one a few years ago, it was very well-attended. Town made a lot of money off of that, that property auction through the Z Coast Group. This money gets, you know, covered, the money that we spend. So this money is well-invested because the town's gonna see this back when those, those legal things get taken care of.
Now, one of the thing, questions that's been coming up because of the publicity in the media is certain states. Let's say you owe a hundred dollars on your house. Town takes it over to get their hundred. House sells for four hundred. Some of these towns keep the residual three hundred.
It's my understanding that we, um, the, we don't. The homeowner would, would get the benefit of, of making the difference in I think what was owed in the mortgage or whatever it might be.
The homeowner would get what's rightfully theirs.
What's rightfully theirs. And, you know, the town would obviously take a, a different position, but would recoup some of those costs.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fair that we recoup our legal fees. It's fair that we recoup the money owed for taxes. It's fair that you recoup, you know, the interest. But above and beyond that, I can't see where, you know, if there was forty thousand dollars of equity on top of that, where we have any right to touch it.
Yeah, I think it's important to note too, um, the town is not in the business of foreclosing on properties. I mean, that's not something the town wants to do. The town does not want a land bank or property bank. It's not the type of situation you wanna be in. There are various programs out there for folks that might be struggling with their tax bills or their increase in property value. I would encourage them to contact the town to learn more about those if that's something that, that they're interested in and we can work with them from there.
Yeah, I think this is last resort. We've had people who moved and left a big tax bill in a piece of land that they want nothing to do with. Okay, the only way you can get your money then is to go to court. But I can't imagine town meeting turning down somebody who says, "I've run into some problems, please help me." If you're, if you're willing to put a good faith effort, when, you know, you, you're gonna get our sympathy and work with you.
Yeah, and there's always payment plan options. I believe that we, we still have and we did. A lot of communities have senior work-off programs where they allow for volunteerism for a certain portion of the bill. Again, I know that there's options, so I would encourage anybody that's watching that is interested to contact. is interested to contact the town and, and just ask them what's, what's available and the resources that are out there to help them.
Article twenty. Oh, nineteen, I'm sorry. The wetlands bylaw.
Yeah, so a lot of changes to the wetlands bylaws, um, you know, really, um, as described by us, and I would say that, you know, this one, there's an awful lot of language being deleted and replaced when you're, when you see what's in the actual article. Um, so you don't have the original document in there, but what's really happening, it's described to us was that, um, they're sort of streamlining the, the restrictions and the restrictions and protections for wetlands, some really aren't changing. We're just putting them in a more rational place. So as you're going through, uh, you know, an application for something like, you know, the actual, actual language and the restrictions would actually be present there as opposed to some adjacent place where it sounded like it was just.
It seems like we're just taking all these islands of policies and bringing them into the main bylaw.
Yeah, I talked to the town planner a little bit today, um, and, uh, you know, the way he explained it to me is exactly that. You're just taking things that already exist um, in disparate places and you're consolidating them here. And it just makes for a more uniform code and an easier process for folks that might be impacted by these to look at them and understand what the regulations are.
Now, twenty wastewater labor contract. That's also being passed over, right?
Yeah, this is another union collective bargaining contract that's gonna be passed over town meeting.
But again, it's the same, it's just a union contract. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, we actually talked about a fair bit. It's what it's doing is, is defining, um, an e-bike, you know, apparently our neighboring towns on this, on this really nice resource we have in the bike path, which, you know, goes through multiple towns. Um, the bike paths, so neighboring towns, you know, have, uh, provisions that, uh, would define what an e-bike is. And it sounds like in our town, um, we're pretty silent on what the definition of, of an e-bike is and it's unclear, you know, in writing, it's unclear if an e-bike is allowed. Um, that makes it, you know, kind of awkward for somebody who uses an e-bike. Makes it awkward from an enforcement perspective. Um, for those who don't know, an, an e-bike is, you know, it looks awful like, like a regular bicycle, but, and they have small uh, rechargeable batteries in them with, uh, motors that just basically pedal assist and make it easier to, you know, move along at a good clip, but, um, you know, still, still pedaling. This isn't a motorcycle, this is an e-bike. Um, and, you know, you know, the sponsor of the article talked a lot about the different, um, type of e-bike. There's some different grades of these things and there's speed caps on them and there's a certain grade and, uh, of motor than, you know, speed that's allowed uh, in this proposal. Um, but what we're doing here is, is having some specific language around what's allowed and not allowed on the bike path. Where e-bikes, by the way, are kind of a new thing and as an avid cyclist, I can tell you that e, e-bikes are actually really exploding in that industry and in that marketplace. Um, so they're, they're really on the rise. It's not something that probably would have been a need five years ago because e-bikes really weren't around.
It's really bringing the law up. I remember when we lived in DC, we would go down, it's before nine eleven. We'd go down to Capitol with a blanket and a picnic basket and just read and relax. Kids are throwing footballs, softballs, everything, soccer balls. You whip out a frisbee and there were three federal policemen jumping on you because somebody put a law in that said, no frisbees. They never said no balls. So it reminds me of this saying, e-bikes weren't a consideration way back when. Now we just gotta get with the times because you're gonna have people coming down the trail from other towns. And all of a sudden, stop, you're not allowed, turn around.
Well, I think that the, the con to this or, or what's gonna, the e-bike thing is kind of gray area, right? Because you have a lot of communities, particularly when you get to the central northern and western parts of the state that really struggle with enforcement of, uh, other motorized vehicles, ATVs, things like that. Um, I know that in particular, a, a lot of your actual enforcement falls under DCR, um, for ATVs, like local police usually don't get involved with, with a lot of that stuff, but um, you know, the concern that was, was brought up by, I, I think, uh, deputy chief, uh, when this article was presented was enforcement. Um, you know, it's gonna be tough to enforce these things if there's an accident on the trail. Uh, these things can be modified to go more than twenty miles an hour. Class two electric bicycle says nothing about, you know, pedaling. So that's, in my mind, there's very little difference between that and, you know, dirt bike. It's a, well, if, it's not if it's altered, um, and.
No, what I'm saying, you alter it and it becomes a low powered.
It becomes a low powered. So it, I, I just see this as, you know, you can view this as a slippery slope. Um, you know, because eventually all these things are gonna be electrified. What's the difference between a class two electrical bike and, uh, you know, an electrical dirt bike when, when that becomes an issue? Um, so it's just my only concern with this, uh, would be the enforcement mechanisms there. Um, you know, the police have expressed concern about it and, uh, how it's gonna impact the flow of traffic on the, the rest of the trail.
I think it's a legitimate comment. I think, uh, I use the bike path pretty regularly. Um, you know, you're right, there's an awful lot of motorized, um, those one-wheeled skateboard things, they call them wheelies, that those are very fast and very impressive. Um, there's all kinds of other scooters out there, you know, there's a part of me that kind of wishes that you didn't need a bylaw that described how people would use a path. You would kind of imagine, you'd like a land where you could say, oh, people could just be civilized and ride on, you know, use a shared, a shared bike path or, you know, path, you know, for jogging, for walking, for cross-country skiing, for all these things and, and, uh, you know, knuckleheads would, you know, kind of not show up and do, you know, silly things. Um, uh, you know, you look at it and say, well, I'm not sure that, uh, all the issues are addressed to here because there, there's still an enforcement problem. Um, but, you know, they think it's important to bring it forward and at least try to address it.
The scary part to me is you get old people like me who will walk in the trail. And you get the one knucklehead out of a thousand who's coming down a little too fast. I could be a hit. Yeah, true. But, but I guess I could say the same thing about regular bikes.
You could. I, I guess, again, strictly from a financial perspective, um, this is just something too that i- if we have to allocate more dollars to the police department for additional enforcement, uh, it's something we're gonna have to talk about next year, depending on how this, this all shakes out.
Twenty-two donation to BBT.
All right, well, uh, this one, uh, really, uh, you know, we, they came before us, finance committee and uh, they're putting in, I think, a new, uh, new grease traps, um, for their facilities. Uh, the request is fifty thousand dollars. Uh, what was made clear when, uh, this was presented was that we pay the lowest assessment per student out of all of their catchment towns that go to BBT. I think it was just over ten thousand dollars. Uh, per student that, um, goes to BT from Milford. But then again, um, that assessment is based on socioeconomic factors in the town. So uh, we're paying the lowest assessment because our families have the lowest area median income. Uh, and so that there's a reason for that assessment being so low. Um, and quite frankly, it was made clear that a lot of the surrounding towns that are looking at Prop two and a half overrides this year, quite simply don't have the money to fund something like this in capital, um, for the facility. So this is a, a big ask for the town. Uh, Al, you made it very clear in your comments that we benefit tremendously from BBT existing. They do a great job with our kids. The kids have always helped out for different construction projects and things, uh, around town. So this is one of those asks where, um, you know, we're, we're putting it to the town to say, hey, you know, we value this school and, uh, we can pay the fifty thousand dollars for the grease trap.
Yeah, and make note that the only time profanity that you used is allowed in the show is when you talk about other towns. The word two and a half override.
That's, that's pretty much a four-letter word when it comes to municipal, uh.
Yeah, that's, that's as profane as you get. But it's okay if you refer to other towns.
Other towns, correct, yes.
Now, it's been many a time we've gone to, um, Dr. Fitzpatrick and he's volunteered the students to help us build things where we put up the materials and they help out. So at this point, it's kind of hard to one time in, I can't remember when we did this, if we ever did this before.
Nope, he made comment, I think this was the first time since he's been superintendent, which has been what, thirty, thirty-five years, that he's come to us for a capital request like this, so.
Yeah, and realistically, he did not get the kind of chapter seventy increase. His funding that we did.
Well, correct.
So, you know, when you look at our school system and deservedly they got it. But they got seven million and seven, they got a lot of extra money. So throwing a couple crumbs to BBT just felt right.
I think, you know, if you think about the differences between our budget and, and what BBT has to work with, they also wouldn't have a, a capital budget that's separate either, right? So we have a capital process that is separate from, you know, the expense budget. So there's some differences in that too.
Well, they have three parts of their budget. One is, is thirteen towns and we all have a formula that says if you don't send one kid to BBT, you still pay X dollars. So that adds up. Dr. Fitz takes his budget of a hundred dollars and says, okay, sixty bucks is paid for by the bases, the formula. Then takes the forty that he needs to meet his budget and divvies it out across the towns equally by the number of students. So if there's a thousand students, you divide the forty dollars by a thousand and each town pays it. Then you have capital. It's just, they haven't come after us for capital. They will eventually, they have to. But it's been pretty good. And we've always been clear that we're happy to see the tuition go up to BBT if it's because he's taking more Milford kids. You know, the more Milford kids he can take, the happier we are. You know, and when you look at Norfolk Aggie, twenty-four thousand dollars per kid. When we ship kids down to Norfolk Aggie, we pay twenty-four thousand dollars per child. I don't know if you mass tuition's that high. Twenty-three.
This is gonna be passed over. It was just a, we thought there would be not enough funding and there's enough funding, so.
And this was all, this will come back when we start talking about how we pick up trash. It was, uh, felt bad for the new health director walking in and talking about changes before everybody was ready to understand what they were. Such a nice guy and such good experience. I just hope that his first, his first, uh, uh, encounter will be the last that came across that way.
Well, hopefully, he went away with appreciation for the passion that the, the finance committee has for trash disposal and, and having our recyclables picked up. You know, what, every other week and just the service that we get, right? Because, um, you know, people really didn't wanna see a degradation of service of any kind and we, we know that a town, the town doesn't either. So we actually asked to, to make sure that, you know, the, the budget he put forward, um, you know, really gave good service and kept it up.
Well, the other thing is anytime some of us feel the hand going in the pocket to take money out, that's a tax. And taxes should be debated and vetted very, very carefully.
And specifically what you were talking about is we really didn't have a desire to have, you know, have to go buy special trash bags. These expensive trash bags for extra trash if we're beyond the one barrel. We're saying like, no, 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 we don't, we don't want that tax as we go. Let's just have it in the budget and like, that we can just cover it and people can just continue to put trash out the way we do right now. But don't nickel and dime this all year long and pretend that we're saving money. That's really what, what was that heart.
And again, if you're gonna bring, uh, uh, an idea forward, clue the town meeting in, clue the town residents in, have the forums before you come to us.
I, I'm also, I'm not exactly sure that, you, you know, even that solution would have helped any of the problems. I mean, i- in, in grad school, we had a class of, you know, the paradoxical impacts of well-intended public policy. And I think it would happen in Seattle where, you know, people, they moved to the bag program and then the, the term Seattle stomp got coined by people trying to stuff as much stuff as they could into bags and they were throwing it off the side of the highway and stuff like that. So, you know, I, I agree, we have a pretty robust, uh, collection service now and it would be really disappointing if people have to scramble around the CVS in the middle of the night and grab a seven-dollar trash bag if they're a bag short, um, so.
Well, there's ways of doing it. Dan, our new health agent came back, he said, you could give people so many extra bags. So when you have that graduation party, when you have Christmas, cause I don't know about you, but with kids? And grandkids, come Christmas, one container just doesn't work. And God help us with those Amazon boxes. So, I think the, the good news was, he got the message. Um, the health board's been around. I mean, I always got a kick out of Lenny Izzo introducing himself when he came on the show as the junior member of the health board here, because he had only been thirty-five years on the board of health. They know.
Pretty good.
Yeah, and the other concern too is just the bulk items. I know that's, that's a conversation, I know you had the folks in here last night. Um, but that was an interesting stat too, that there's, there's some, uh, bulk items are becoming an issue, but, you know.
There's ways around it. Now, we go to twenty-four, the utes.
So twenty-four, it's going to be passed over, um, but the, the idea here was, um, you know, to work on, you know, a multi-purpose media center in the basement of the youth center. And if you haven't been to the youth center, um, it's really pretty incredible what, what they've done over there. If you look at all these spaces that are, that are broken out for different activities, whether it's a dance room or different sports things, um, upstairs, basketball courts, I mean, it's, it's really an impressive facility. And I think, you know, over the years, um, we've seen that organization step up, you know, during, you know, the lockdowns when schools were closed for, you know, the pandemic, there was classrooms set up down there. I remember touring with you, Al, we saw the classrooms and, you know, set up with all the spacing set up. So incredible facility. Um, you know, the kids get a lot of benefit out of it. In, in this case, we, it looks like there's some grants that are gonna take care of this project. And an awful lot of the work has been done in these, the spaces I designed, I, I mentioned, like the dance studio we know is covered by grants, um, sometimes donations from local businesses, sometimes grants, but they're always trying to be nimble and look for sources of funding.
Thing was, it got approved at town meeting, at a budget and materials costs and labor costs, we all know have been going crazy lately. So they didn't have enough money to finish. Good news is, we tip our hat to Rep. Brian Murray, Becca Roush, for bringing in money to cover it. So we got the state to cover the final part of that.
Yeah, I mean, Brian's been a tremendous advocate, uh, for that building and that facility and that program. It feels like forever. But having grown up here and used that youth center when it was first taken possession of by the town, when there was only one program that was offered, it was wiffle ball after school and there were holes in the floor and everything like that. Um, it's amazing to see how far that facility has, has come and what we've been able to do with it.
You're, you're a youngster. You had to be there when we played ball hockey in the, uh, late sixties in the freezing cold and those, um, doors. You, more than once you ruin your shoulder running up the wall and somebody bumping you into the. But tho- those were the days where, you know, it was still the armory.
Yep, yep.
Um, twenty-five, starting salaries.
Uh, so basically, um, again, this is more of a housekeeping item, uh, the way it was explained to us was, uh, so new hires are gonna be, uh, they're gonna begin at the appropriate step level for their experience. Um, and this is going to, you know, effectively put into place a policy that's kind of, that was already in place. I think it was taken out and I was putting it back into place. Um, you know, if, if you have a position where your responsibilities and your roles don't change, uh, you're not gonna be hopping all over, you know, the step and grade level because the idea being, you know, at some point, um, you know, you gotta max out. And I think that that's appropriate for municipal government. If, you know, you have somebody in a position, their roles and responsibilities are what they are. Unless that position changes, um, there's going to be kind of a, uh, a stability in the step process.
Well, the other thing too is it's saying that if you're gonna move up steps, not your cola, but actual steps. Something is have to happen. I survived the year. Okay, you're now at step four. I survived another year. You're at step five. Something has to physically happen. Your job, something came that you earned the next level up.
Yeah, and this prevents a situation that people get mad about when they, they read in the Herald, you know, somebody just by the nature of being in a position for thirty-five years, regardless of position, is now making more than a, a college president because they've been there and they've just worked the, you know, the steps and, um, you know, this kind of just adds some stability to that process and it outlines it very clearly for our employees. And I think it's, it's a good.
It also gives you the flexibility that, you know, if your range is three to ten dollars and somebody in the next town over is making four or five, you can bring them in at four or five. You don't have to bring them in at three because I want you to come work for me, but I'm gonna cut your pay by twenty percent. The argument kind of doesn't hold water that way.
Yeah, this is just another example of us building on. We had that robust personnel study that was done last year, I think, uh, by the consulting firm that brought all of our positions in line with market values and regional market rates. Um, this just bolsters kind of the work that's already been done and just really brings us into a, a very competitive and, and stable era for municipal employees.
And here comes an old friend, number twenty-six hazmat cleanup behind Benjamin Moore.
Yeah, so there's, uh, the DEP is, 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 I think, notified us that there is some, uh, some pollution that's not from Benjamin Moore, but it's from a previous land owner or land user that's, um, that's, you know, needs some remediation. And, you know, this.
that's, you know, needs some remediation, and, you know, this is gonna be a project with a bunch of steps and a bunch of costs, and I think the ask here is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, really for the study, to see what we're really getting into. These types of projects happen all over New England because, you know, this, you know, is, this is where, you know, the Industrial Revolution kind of started.
It's all industrial, yeah.
Absolutely, and, you know, people made messes back then, and it's, it's all over New England, we have these places that are messes.
But they were such beautiful messes.
They were beautiful messes.
When we went down to the pool, you'd go behind stylons and you had those bright yellow pools and the bright orange pools. Nobody ever knew that the heavy metals were crossing.
Well, I mean, it's a good thing the camera's hiding your tail. But, you know, I think what's, what's important to correct to, I just wanna put it out there, I mean, DEP has not, it's their opinion that there is something that needs to be remediated, I think that, you know, our first step is to actually take a look at what needs to be done, what the actual issue is. But it is a multi-step process, and, you know, depending on how this first step goes, it's gonna dictate how we move forward with it.
This is going to be.
It's gonna be expensive.
Years ago, it was, we need another two hundred and fifty thousand, then another five hundred thousand, you know, it was, and this is gonna be the same thing.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
You know, and like you say, you're not arguing pure facts. They could tell you that they think maybe there's a possibility.
Oh, sure. I mean, maybe. It figures there was some discussion, hey, we could fight this, and we would spend every bit as much money fighting it, but I have no interest in fighting that. We, you know, it'd be, there's a well not very far away from there, they're sure that this, whatever this is, isn't going towards the wells, but you know what? I think we should, we should probably follow the advice and we should look into this and see what we've got there. Well, it just, it depends, I think, what comes up, I think we just have to know what we're doing before we do it. DEP stands for Department of Expensive Projects, and that's kind of, they've always been that way, you know, but there's been issues in a lot of other communities where, you know, there are things that the DEP will go into, and it, you know, they might, they might not have all the information either, so this just puts us in better footing, regardless of what the next steps are going to be.
Either way, we don't have a choice, they.
That's right.
Corporate engineers spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in phase one. We have to spend two fifty in phase two.
Yep.
So this, I think, is gonna ask for two and a quarter because there's some time-sensitive studies that have to be done that the Fin- Finance Committee will take care of out of our reserve fund, so we don't lose the timing on it. And then, phase three, four, and five, we'll wait and see.
Yep.
Now, twenty-seven, the doggies.
Well, this is another study, I mean, so this is a five thousand dollar ask for, you know, to design a dog park and look into a dog park. You know, I think there's still a lot of questions about where that would be and what it would look like and what the features would be. But this is really to kind of kick this off, you know, kick off this as an idea in town is to have a place that's a dedicated dog park. But still, you know, details TBD of like what that would look like, what the exact dog park could be or where it would be. This is also tied to a grant, I think that, that has to be brought up too, that there's, the grant has certain stipulations, and it's the first phase of a multi-phase grant process that this ad hoc committee is looking to pursue. So this, my understanding is, you know, when you work a parks project, you need a rendering of some kind. There hasn't been a location picked, but this five thousand dollars will go towards a conceptual rendering of what the features of a dog park might be that meet the funder's expectations for this grant, and that it will allow you to move forward with the grant process.
And, you know, one of our more enlightened members brought out that when we talk about what it's gonna cost to do the park, you don't always include the soft costs.
That's a stipulation in the grant, so the grant would cover a portion of the hard costs, the soft costs would not be covered. When you, depending on what the project looks like, and of course, you don't know because you don't know the location or anything about it. You know, your soft costs for a large-scale project could be upwards of thirty percent of the total, you know, project cost, so there, there is a potential that, you know, town meeting's gonna have to weigh, is this something they want to pursue, and if so, there could be some dollars that, that are gonna be asked for in the fall.
Yeah, I mean legitimately, five thousand dollars doesn't commit us to anything.
Right.
Okay, it commits us to spend five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Then the sponsors came back and said they would not come to us for any additional money until they had a real plan. What is it, because I said, what's a dog park, is it just a fence with grass?
Well, again, that's defined by the funder in the grant opportunity.
Right, but that's, they've gotta come up with, what is a dog park? Where is the dog park gonna be? How's it gonna be maintained? You know, because like the trail, we've had to augment departments because people love the trail, it's one of the most used areas of town. But that's the way to start, you start small and build up. And then the last two articles are cleanup articles.
Well, I love twenty-eight, I mean, really what this is about is all the things that we've been approving at other town meetings. So, you know, set aside money for a project, the first one here is some air cylinders from the fire department. Project happens, if we don't spend the full amount of money, now we have the administrative process of returning that money back and swimming it back into the town accounts and closing out those articles that we passed in, you know, in, in prior town meetings. So this is the, bringing the leftover money back.
Like I said, town meeting giveth, and only town meeting can take it away. Because I know a lot of people look at this and say, seriously, nine dollars and sixty cents you have?
Well, it has to go through the process.
But it is money.
Yep, yep, otherwise it sits in that.
Forever.
Forever, it's there forever, yeah, absolutely.
Forever. So this allows us to clean up articles that are done and say there's, I mean, some of these articles can be a hundred thousand dollars left over. I mean, you know, you start thinking about the school. When you're talking about tens of millions of dollars, this good amount of money could be left over that comes back to the general fund. And the last article is just balancing the books. There is a law, all of the departments have a budget for personnel and a budget for stuff. Only the school committee can move money between the two lines without asking town meeting permission. So come the end of the year, you have to have a balanced budget. So if you've got a hundred dollars left over in salaries and you're a hundred dollars short in salt or stuff.
You gotta make a transfer.
You make a transfer, and Zach monitors every budget to make sure that everyone is balanced.
Yep, and then town meeting votes on it.
And then town meeting votes on it. And that's the warrant for this spring.
It's pretty light, a lot of things are procedural, absolutely, and.
You're gonna go out on a limb and predict which article that means the least is gonna take the most time?
Well, I mean, you know, somebody could bring a chicken article to the floor.
Yeah.
And, you know, we could, we could, but no, I think there's some, realistically, I think the issues that are not housekeeping-related could, you know, I think folks are gonna wanna know more about the e-bike article. And it's important we have those conversations so we're informed and we can help inform folks, and it's the same thing, you hear something, an exciting project like a new town park or for, you know, potential for a new dog park. People are gonna have opinions as to, you know, hey, what's this gonna look like, where do I want it to go, and, you know, those are types of projects that excite people, people involved.
Well, the good news is, people turn out, and that's what we want. I mean, after a nine percent turnout for voting in the election, you get scared, but we do have at least the quorum turnout for every town meeting.
Yeah, I think people, they, they represent a town meeting, I mean, you, you have to run to be a town meeting member, and they, they take it seriously, so it's good.
And realistically, you're talking two nights a year, so.
Sometimes three.
Sometimes three, but mainly two, and you really can have an impact. One person can make a difference. So please, consider if you have the inkling and the time, get involved in town government, be a person who votes and makes changes. And as always, to our six loyal viewers, thank you for joining us. May God bless, and may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, good night, thanks, guys.